I don't deserve mercy from you God, you gave me mercy. And Lord, even though I don't deserve favor, Lord, you gave me favor. And Lord, even though I don't deserve any goodness thing, any good thing, Father God, you, you, Lord, you blessed me, it's so much of good things, Father God. Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, we wanna thank you. Can we open up our lips and say, "God, we wanna thank you for being so good to me, even though I don't deserve to be good, oh Lord Jesus." Lord, only I know how sinner I am, how bigger sinner I am, but still, oh Father God, but still, oh Father God, you know me better than I do. You know my thoughts from afar, you know me when I sit, when I rise. Who can hide from your presence, that's what the psalmist says. But Lord, like the psalmist says, "Father God, you know everything about me, but still you chose to love me." Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, we wanna thank you. Lord, we wanna thank you for giving us this time to come into your house this evening, to worship you, to praise you, to give you glory. This evening, Father God, as we come into your presence, Lord, we ask that you might be glorified and you might be exalted, oh Father God. Lord, teach us this evening what you have in store for us, Lord, we wanna thank you. Lord, we commit this time into your hands, oh Father God. Can we, Lord, we commit this time into your hands. Lord, we ask that you might be, Lord, exalted in the places that you have said. Father God, where two or three are gathered in my name, I'll be in the midst of them. Lord, we wanna thank you for your here in the midst of, Father God. You're here in our midst this evening, Father God. For your prayer, for your word also says, Father God, "Lord, God dwells in the praises of his people." We have come to praise you, we have come to worship you, Father God. Lord, with our, Lord, with our meditation of your word, with us, Lord, getting soaked into your word. And Lord, when we praise you and worship you, Lord, in this sense, Father God, Lord, we thank you that you're here in our midst this evening. Talk to each and every one of us, Father God. Talk to each and every one of us this evening. And Lord, we ask that you might, Lord, enlighten our minds, open our minds, oh Father God. And Lord, we ask that you might help us, Father God. Come into your house, oh Father God, with a heart of gratitude. This evening, we've come into your presence with a heart of gratitude, Lord, saying, "Thank you for being so kind, thank you for rescuing us, thank you, Lord, for redeeming us, and thank you, Lord, for, Lord, putting up with us, Father God, despite us, Lord, letting you down so many times, despite us, Father God, Father God denying you, despite us, Father God betraying you, despite us, Father God turning our back towards you, despite us being who we are as human beings, but still, oh Father God, you knew, you knew, and still you died on the cross for each and every one of us. You shed your precious blood on the cross, cross for me, for each and every one of us, that we could be rescued, that we could be redeemed, that we could be healed, that we could be blessed, that we could be anointed, that we could have eternal life, that we could have blessings and prosperity in this world and the next. Lord, we wanna thank you, how care, how kind of God are you, Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, we wanna thank you. This evening, as we come into your presence, Lord, we ask that you might be exalted, that you might be exalted, Father God. This evening, Father God, we ask that you might be glorified, that, Lord, we ask that you might be exalted in our lives this evening, Father God. And Lord, speak to us through your servant. And Lord, we humbly come into your presence this evening, and we humble ourselves at your feet, looking up to you in expectation, saying, "Lord, you have the words of eternal life," just like how Peter said, "Lord, we want to look up to you and say, 'Lord, to whom shall we go, God? To whom shall we turn to? For you have the words of eternal life.'" And Lord, eternal life is with you, God. So we've come into your throne room, and Lord, like Mary, we want to choose the right things, Father God, in this world. We want to things that, we want to choose things that cannot be taken away from us and choose the right things, Father God, to sit at your feet and to, and to hear from you and not to be, Father God, not to be, Father God, burdened with the things of this world. But then, Lord, leave those cares outside and here, come into your house to listen to you and to spend time with you and to enjoy your presence. Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, for giving us this opportunity. Thank you for giving us this privilege, Lord, we wanna thank you. And Jesus, we thank you that you came down, you humbled yourself, you humbled yourself, you became, Lord, you became a sacrifice for each and every one of us. And Lord, though you were a God, though you were a God, though you were so big, though you were, Lord, enjoyed, Lord, enjoyed every privilege in heaven, though you were seated and you had angels worshiping you, Lord, forever worshiping you, countless angels worshiping you and praising you, you came down, Father God, and you did not consider equality with man, something, equality with God, something to be grasped, but then you humbled yourself to the point of death, and Lord, you became human and you died. You pay, you bore my sin, my pain, my weaknesses, my curses. Lord, we wanna thank you, thank you, thank you this evening. And Lord, we ask that you might be glorified. Father God, we wanna thank you and praise you. Thank you for sending us Jesus. Thank you, Lord, for sending us Jesus this evening. Thank you, Father God, for you loved us. Thank you, Father God, the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the God who keeps his promises and covenants. Thank you, Lord, for helping us come into your house this evening. Thank you, God, you're a promise-keeping God, you're a covenant-keeping God. You're the God of Shadrach, Meshach, Abednego, and Daniel. You're a God who never forsakes your children. You're the God of, you're the God of Gideon, of David, of Joshua, and Samson. You're the God who's mighty and battled the lot of hosts. The Lord is a warrior, the Lord has never lost a battle. The God is never gonna lose a battle, Lord, we wanna thank you. And you're the God of Elijah, Elisha, and all the prophets. You're a God who hears and answers prayers and makes even the impossible things happen. You're the God of Solomon, Daniel, and Joshua, and Joseph. You're a God of infinite knowledge and wisdom and understanding. There's no searching of your understanding, there's no limit to what you know. You're the ancient of days, you know, the beginning from the end, Lord, we wanna thank you. Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, we wanna thank you this evening. And Lord, we wanna thank you this evening, and we wanna thank you, thank you, God, for you're the God of Phinehas, of Moses, of Abraham, David, and Job. You're a God who heard and answered the prayers of the people who stood in the gap, oh God. Lord, we wanna thank you, God, we wanna thank you. When Phinehas humbled himself and when Phinehas burnt with zeal, you saw a zealousness and you, Lord, you, and Lord, you relented from destroying the Israelites, Father God. When Abraham prayed, oh Father God, and stood in the gap, you relented, Lord, from destroying, Lord, so, Lord, oh Father God, and you rescued, Lord, on the family, and Lord, you, Lord, we wanna thank you. When, Lord, when Abraham, when, Lord, when Moses prayed, you heard and answered his prayers and you relented, Lord, Father God, Lord, from destroying the Israelites, oh Lord. When David prayed, you heard and answered your, answered his prayers and you relented from destroying the Israelite army. When Job prayed, you heard and answered his prayers, oh Father God. And Lord, you relented, Lord, and you healed him and you forgave his friends. Lord, we wanna thank you for you're a God who hears the prayers of the intercessors. You're a God who hears the prayers of people who stand in the gap. Lord, we wanna thank you for that, Lord, we wanna thank you. And you're a God who heals us, Father God. You're a God who healed a woman with, you're a woman with issue of blood. You're a God who healed the leper. You're a God who healed Simon the leper. You're a God who healed Naaman the leper. You're a God who healed the ten leopards. You're a God who healed the mute and the deaf and the blind, oh Father God. And you're a God, oh Father God, who's still healing. Lord, we wanna thank you, Lord, we wanna thank you. This evening, Lord, we wanna thank you. Can we praise God and say, "Thank you," for he's still doing the same things that he's doing. He's just not the God of yesterday, he is the God of today. He is the God of today, and he is gonna be the God of tomorrow as well. He is the same yesterday, today, and forever, that's what the word of God says. The word of God says he is the same God, he does not change, just like the word of God says, "I am now," the word of God says. And he says in his word, saying, "I'm not a man that I should lie, I'm not a son of man that I should change my mind." Lord, we, we wanna thank you for you are the same God, yesterday, today, and forever. Lord, we wanna thank you this evening, Lord, we wanna thank you. This evening, Father God, we wanna thank you, God, this evening. And we come into your presence this evening, Father God, and we humble ourselves and we say, "God, talk to us this evening, Father God. Talk to us this evening and teach us your word. And Lord, enlighten us, Father God. And Lord, we wanna thank you, Jesus. And Lord, we welcome you, Holy Spirit of God. Thank you, Jesus, when you went up to the heavens, oh Father God, to prepare a place for us. You didn't leave us empty-handed, you didn't leave us, and you said, "I will send, I will send a comforter, I will send a comforter who will teach you everything, who will remind you of everything." Lord, we wanna thank you, Holy Spirit of God, we thank you. Holy Spirit of God, we thank you for coming down. Holy Spirit of God, you came down, you inspired the word, you revealed the word, you helped us understand the word. You're a God who clothes us power, anoints our head with oil. Lord, we wanna thank you this evening, Father God. We wanna thank you, thank you, thank you this evening, God. Lord, we wanna thank you this evening, Father God. So, so we humble ourselves this evening and say, "Welcome, Holy Spirit," and say, "Lord, we welcome you this evening." Lord, we welcome you this evening, Father God. And Lord, we need you this evening. Holy Spirit of God, we welcome you. We welcome you, Holy Spirit of God, this evening. And Lord, we wanna give you praise, we wanna give you glory, we wanna give you honor, for you alone deserve it, oh God, this evening. Lord, we wanna thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Can we lift up our hands to heaven and say, "God, thank you. Lord, we need you, God, Lord, we need you, God. And Lord, we thank you for you deserve all the glory, you deserve all the praise, you deserve all the honor, and you are welcome in this place, oh God. Lord, we wanna thank you, God. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands and worship and we bless your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands and worship and we bless your holy name, for you are great, you're a miracle so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. For you are great, you're a miracle so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. So you deserve the glory. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands and worship and we bless your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands and worship and we bless your holy name, for you are great, you're a miracle so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. For you are great, you're a miracle so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. For you are great, you are great. You're a miracle so great. There is no one else like you. Oh, there is. There is no one else. For you are great, you're a miracle so great. There is no one else like you. There is, there is no one else like you. You deserve. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift your hand. Lord, we lift our hands and worship. Can you stand up in the presence of God, please? You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift your hand. Lord, we lift our hands and worship as we bless your holy name. One more time, you. You deserve. You deserve glory. And the honor. Lord, we lift our hands and worship. Oh, you are great, you are great. You're a miracle so great. There is no one else like you. There is, there is no. You are great. You're a miracle so great. There is no, there is no, there is no way. You know, you are great, you are great. Yeah, yeah. There is no one, there is no one. Lift your voice and say, "You are great, you are great. You're a miracle so great in my life, in this church, you are great. You are great, you are great. So great, there is no one, there is no one, there is no one. There is no one else like you. Can you say to thank God? I rely, I rely on you, precious Holy Ghost, I rely on you. I rely, I rely on you, precious Holy Ghost, I rely. Can you sing one more time? I rely, I rely, I rely on you, precious. Precious Holy Ghost, I rely. Sing "You Depend." I depend, I depend, I depend. With the pound of God. Oh, I depend. Lift your voice and say. I depend, I depend, I depend, oh, you are sharing, oh. I depend. Oh, I depend, I depend, I depend, I depend, oh, Holy Ghost. Ah, lift your voice and say, "Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost. Oh, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost. Save me, save me, and do us. Ha, ha, ha. Oh, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost. Save me, save me, and do us. Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost. Save me, save me, and do us. Oh, without, without, without you, without you, yeah. I am nothing, nothing, oh, Holy Ghost. Without you, without you, without you, without you, without you. Nothing I want. Lift your voice and say, "Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost." Oh, Holy Ghost. Save me, save me. Rosapana, kenza la, ha. Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, oh. Hey, Holy Ghost, oh, save me, save me, ha, ha. Allah sarame, oh, Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost, oh, Holy Ghost. Lift your hand and say, "Holy Ghost, save me, save me. Oh, without, without, without you, without you. I am nothing, nothing, nothing I want. Without you, without you, without you, without you, I am. I am nothing, nothing, hey, Holy Ghost. Hey, without you, without you, without you, without you, without you, hey. Hey, Holy Ghost, hey, without you, ha, la sarame, kenza, without you, God. Without you, without you, nothing, nothing I want. Without you, Holy Spirit, without you, without you, without you, without you. Without you, without you, I am nothing. Oh, in this church, without the Holy Spirit, nothing can be happened. Holy Ghost. Lift your voice and say, "Without you, I am nothing. Without you, I am nothing. Oh, without you, yeah, I am nothing, nothing, nothing I want. Without you, in this world, we are nothing. Without you, without, ah, I am nothing, nothing, oh, Holy Ghost. Without you, without you, without you, ah, you, yeah. I am nothing, I am nothing, I am nothing, oh, oh. Hey, ya, ya, 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 eh. Pow. Oh, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, eh, ha, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya. Hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya, oh, hey, ya, yeah. Hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, ya, hey, ya, 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 eh. Oh, hey, ya, ya, 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 eh. Ha, 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 ha. I don't know if you can feel what I feel now. I don't know if you can feel what I feel right now, ha, ha, ha. Because if you feel the something, I can hear the way you are worshiped, God. Rasapana, kenemadi. Kalamaano. So pride, ken'talama. Lo so mana, ken'tarad. Lo so pride, ken'talama. Le basanta, lamena. Jesus Christ. There is prophecy over me. I cannot give up now. I cannot fail my love. I must. I must fulfill. There is prophecy over me. I cannot give up now. I cannot fail my, I must, I must fulfill. Hmm, there is prophecy. I cannot feel, oh, I cannot fail my love. I must fulfill. There is prophecy over me. I cannot give up now. I cannot fail my love. I must fulfill his goal. Prophecy over me. I cannot give up now. I cannot fail my love. I must fulfill. There's a spirit inside of me. He is the Holy Ghost. I cannot fail my love. I must fulfill. One more time. There's a spirit inside of me. He is the Holy Ghost. I cannot fail my love. I must fulfill his goal. Next two minutes, clap your hands and pray in tongues, everybody. Rikabo, satteke mahasiyana, ette deri yatoro. Eh, lima, ma, 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 oh, eh, shan, deri, yana, deri, bo. Oh, lima, ma, 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 na, ni, anta, bo. Iberaboni, andri, mina, sandre, ni, bo, ni, anta, bo. Ik, come on, aganaba, ni, andri, bina, bo. Eh, ke, mas, san, eh. Uy, ma, 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 shan, deri, yana. Come on, come on, come on. Yes, let it be, oh, hana, be, bali. Oh, Jesus, Jesus, oh, Jesus. Eh, come on, meh, dena, sandre, eh, ke, ba, ba, meh, dena, bo, ni, andri, biya. Eh, lima, ma, 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 shan, deri, yana. Ik, come on, ma, ma, shan, teke, ba, 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 ba. Eh, ke, deri, yana, de, rika, ma, la, bo. Oh, rika, na, di, yana. Yes, yes. Oh, let it be released in the name and name of Jesus. Eh, ke, ma, 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 shan, dera, ma, 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 ma. Oh, li, na, ra, ta, ma, ma, ma. Hallelujah. Holy Spirit of God, you're welcomed in this place. We welcome you. Move in power. Be part of our conversation this evening in Jesus' name. Amen, amen. Currently be seated and. Kindly be seated and I didn't tell you to bring these chairs. I told you to bring the executive chair. From this room and from that room, executive chair. Praise God, hallelujah. So we're gonna do something a little different, okay? And those or on the extremes, we wanna just lightly turn your chairs this side because we are gonna be sitting and talking. Bring that one, bring that one up here. You understand English, good. Right. How many of you excited? The Man of God is gonna share with you some of his powerful, challenging, inspiring stories. Are you ready? Amen? The more and more I speak to him, I'm really getting excited about the amazing things that God has been doing through this Man of God. And I told you, he's an apostle by calling. And he's a, what I can say, adventurer in the Kingdom of God. What nobody does, he will try to attempt. Always, he breaks new grounds. It doesn't work where somebody else is doing his work. He reaches out to African countries, North America, and so many other places, taking the gospel. And having this Man of God in our midst is a great privilege. And I just want some of his grace and inspiration, the anointing that he carries, may be deposited in each and every one of us so that we can win souls for God. And when you want to win souls for God, I want you to realize that another important thing is how to fight against the demonic powers. Unless you first bind the strong man, you cannot go in and take hold of his possessions. Amen? So if you wanna win souls, you have to be good at defeating Satan, who's already defeated. Amen? If you're not a warrior, it doesn't work out for any one of us. So this evening, we're going to relax. Tell somebody, relax. Okay, and me and the man, come on, let's put our hands and welcome God's servant. Give us your flexibility to just turn around if you want to. So. And how we started the missions is amazing, and Mike? Right. And to begin with, in order to go for missions, he used to hop into trucks, you know, trucks carrying goods. Namor lari. Uh, pota de lari. He used to get into those kind, many years back, on his own. You know, with the little money he had. And he used to go from place to place, place to place, sharing the gospel. Amen? And we all have only one life. I pray that that fire, that flame, will be ignited into all of us. And a lot of times, we talk about too many things, but you know, tonight, you know, one of my main concerns, we have somebody who has done it. And it's gonna be fantastic, you know, to speak about so many beautiful things about the Kingdom of God in an air-conditioned facility, sitting like each one of us. But to go out under dirtier hands, you know, and to do what God has assigned for you, it takes a lot of mission, faith, and spiritual militancy in order to accomplish that, amen? So even as the Man of God will share with us, you know, we are going to be listening. Even as you listen to him, let the prayer keep on going in your heart. Lord, I just see what this man has. Amen, I told you. Uh, he's seventy plus, he's not an young man, but he's young in the spirit. But he always say, I don't have any time to waste. Amen? Just for three days, he's come just for you and me. Amen? And we need to ask our Lord, give an impartation to us. Hallelujah. Uh, how many of you are seventy years old? Put your hand. Seventy, only one. Two, three, four. Amen? Amen. And the rest of all, below seventy. So maybe when you touch seventy, how many of you wanna be like him?
Yes.
It's gonna happen. He told me, you know, pastor, unlike you, I started very late. I was an engineer working for the government. And after many years, I started. So he said, so right from day one, I started running because I started late and still is running. Amen? And many times, you would have heard me saying the same thing, you know, about how the men of God, as they grow old, many of them are buried in their success. The flame is gone, the anointing is gone. And they always take merit in their past success. You know, but this Man of God is not like that. He's seventy, full of fire. That has been my prayer, my wife's prayer all the time. When I get old, when I touch ninety or eighty or seventy, my anointing will be double.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Amen? It's not a question of what you've done in the past. What matters the most is what you carry on the inside. Aleisha, even after, after he was dead, you know, one man fell into his pit, you know, grave, and he came back alive. Right? So that kind of anointing carried. So we're going to listen to the Man of God. One more time, would you please put your hands and welcome God's servant?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So. We'll go on for some time, but if you find yourself being in a hurry to go somewhere after six ten, fifty, or six thirty, you can leave, okay? But you know, we wanna make use of this time. Amen? And do what we can, amen? So Bishop.
Yes, sir.
It's our honor and a privilege to have you with us.
Thank you.
And thank you for, you can move to the side so people can, you know, uh, and we are really excited to hear from you. Amen?
Thank you for having me.
So briefly, you know, please tell us about uh, your salvation in few minutes. I don't want a big story.
Yeah.
And then tell us, what made you to go after souls? And now, what is the desire? That has been there for many years. And even at the age of seventy, it's, you're pushing yourself very hard.
Yes.
To do that.
Yes.
And we want to know what it is. Kindly share with us.
Well, it depends on how you have related with God right from the beginning. My background was not very good because I come from a family where my paternal grandfather, maternal grandfather, were both witch doctors. So I don't have a spiritual Christian background. I'm the first person to go to church. So I'm the first, first generation Christian. And when I got saved, I had a big burden. When I learned what the power of the Holy Spirit can do, I desired with all my heart. I spent many days and nights praying for the infilling of the Holy Ghost. What did I desire? To speak in tongues like I had seen, I had seen my friends do. And I went to every person whom I heard was a strong preacher in my country. Visiting preachers, home preachers, but I never got filled. Reason, the reason I heard for the infilling of the Holy Ghost was wrong. Until two years later, imagine two years seeking. I remember one night, one evening, I was taken to a, to a school field by my friends. For I told them, if I don't get the Holy Ghost, I was so frustrated. If I'm not filled with the Holy Spirit, then something is wrong with me. And I have seen commitments since that cannot be forgiven because I'm saved, but I'm not being filled, and it is the promise that I have learned from the Bible. Why am I not being filled? They did everything they could. I could not receive the Holy Ghost until one told me to mimic, speak like me. Ba 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 ba, ba ba ba. I tried, it was not in me. So I went back to the room, my schoolroom, dormitory room, very frustrated. One night, as I prayed, I said, God, if you fill me with this power, I'll do your work, I'll preach the gospel, first of all, to my people and to my nation and to my neighbors and wherever else you send me. So that was the reason. That evening, that prayer I made in a very short time. That evening during prep time, I felt a big urge to go and pray. I went to a place we used to call the upper room in high school, upper room. Immediately, I touched the threshold of the, of the, of the room. Something like a strong weed pulled me inside and I fell inside. From there, it was about eight thirty in the evening, I spoke in tongues up to three in the morning. That is how I was filled with the Holy Spirit. The fact to not, to not hear is, I didn't have the reason to be filled with the Holy Ghost other than to speak in tongues like my friends. That was my first reason. So I never got filled. But when I mentioned to God, I will work for you, and I was very genuine. I will work for you, I will reach souls, I will do this. That's what I didn't know to pray. And that is what the scriptures tell us. We do not know how to pray, but the Spirit helps us. So that evening, the Spirit helped me to have the right reason for being filled with the Holy Ghost. Then much later, I read from the book of Romans fifteen, verse number nineteen. By the power of signs and miracles and the Holy Spirit, I have fully preached the gospel from Jerusalem, which I considered home. From Jerusalem all the way to Illyricum and round about. That was the world that was during Paul's time. And I said, I'll preach to my people, for my people are in total darkness. That one I had realized, total darkness. I'll begin with my people. And so when I got filled with the Holy Spirit, every time and every day, I go back to God for the infilling, to be recharged for the next assignment. Even before I came here, I hid myself, I gave myself some days to hide myself for this mission. And you will see what God will do before we wind up, before we finish tomorrow. Amen? God is waiting for us to ask, and he will perform.
Awesome, awesome. Man of God, and I heard the bishop not telling me, you know, he had reached out to a lot of uh, Kenyan towns and villages that are totally Muslims, who are totally Muslims. And you know, right, we have few Muslim families here. But to reach out a Muslim is very difficult in any part of the world.
Yes.
Because of the indoctrination.
Yes.
And I was kind of told, and I shared with me testimonies, many of his, you know, converts, early ministers, they have been murdered, died as martyrs. And every time you will go, you was not sure you would come back. And entire villages have come to the Lord, all of them are Muslims, through this ministry. So we are a little excited. And how did that journey began? And tell us in a nutshell what happened, yeah?
You know, when God calls you and gives you an assignment, it is his duty to equip you and to protect you. So I've been to places where many people have gone and have not come back.
One minute, one minute, Bishop, thank you. And you have your notes? Okay? So kindly, when you understand a point, note it down. Because there's gonna be a learning time. One point you said was, when God's gonna call you, he's gonna equip you and protect you.
Yes.
Write, write down, write down, okay? Because later on, you may not recollect that. It's good to listen to testimonies, but some of the key principles he unlocks, we're gonna use it in our own lives. Sorry, Bishop.
Good. So those places that cause a lot of fear in the hearts of men, I don't fear. For I know God has called me to reach those people. And even though other people fear, I don't, I don't have an iota of fear. For I know, if there is work in that place, I'll go in, win souls, and go back. And that has happened many, many, many times. I remember in two zero four and two zero, two zero four, two zero four, two zero six, I opened a region where even government officers in my country feared to be sent there for there is a lot of animosity, it's extremely dangerous. Even to mention the name of Jesus, I, I don't know what next. Nobody invited me there. I just failed to pray and prepare myself on that day that I will go. And I told my wife where I was going. She asked me, are you sure? I told her, double sure. Who is, who are you going to? Told her, to nobody, I'm going to that lad, and God has a way for me. So I boarded a truck that transports things. It's not a long, long trip, but there was no, there were no roads then. Now there is a road, a road that I spoke into being after some time. So a journey of nine hundred kilometers took four days because you are moving at snail, snail speed. When I got to the marketplace, when I alightened the truck, I just hung my back and started moving, knowing God must lead me to some place. I went and knocked at a door of people that I didn't know. The man who opened the door, he smiled widely, like he knew me all the years. He told me, come in, settle down, have a, take a shower, and then I'll tell you the story. In the evening is when he told me, I have been dreaming to receive a visitor who is exactly like you. You see? I asked him, were you told the name? He said, no. But I received a visitor with a dark, dark skin, a dark bald head. And he was to tell me something about Isa. Isa is Jesus. My family has been receiving wonderful, weird dreams. Somebody comes into our house, stands in our mid, in the middle, and disappears at will. And in my dream, I saw you would come to come and explain to us. I understood why God was calling me there. So in the morning, he invited three other families. Women, not men, women. They sat around as he narrated the story. One of the women said, even in our home, we have been receiving such a dream. Let me call my husband to tell if this is the man he has. Let me call my husband to tell if this is the man he has been seeing. The husband came and confirmed I've been going to his house in the dream. As I was sharing the gospel with these people, the basics of how I'm God saved, and who Jesus is, why he came, and what his intentions to humanity, one of the ladies began to weep. He, he asked me, do you mean Jesus also came to heal? Said, yes, my Jesus heals. It's not just a name, he heals. She said, I have my sister who has an invalid girl, nine years old, has never even sat down. Can I call her? I told her, well, is she far? No. When they came, they came another eight women. They sat around me, and as I was sharing what Jesus can do and what he has done for me. You know, sharing the stories of Jesus in the Bible is different from sharing what he has done for you. Because what he did for Mary Magdalene, what he did for Lazarus, what for, he did for Lazarus, it's not you. That's a story. We believe it because it's, it is in the scriptures. But Jesus is alive. He's still healing. I told them about the way God healed me when I was in elementary school. Almost at the end of every time, I had severe malaria, which could not allow me to write my final exam. Until one day, I made a prayer, even without knowing, you know, God? Should you heal me because I perform well up to exam time? If you heal me and don't ever allow me to be sick again, I'm going to get saved. I was in elementary, small boy. I prayed foolishly. I never contacted malaria, any disease again up to this age. I don't get, I don't fall sick, never. He healed me, healed me almost permanently. Now, when I kept on sharing my testimony of how he has worked with me and how the miracles I've received since getting saved, even my mother, my brothers, my sisters, my pe, my comrades, while I was sharing, the baby is, the, the, the nine year girl is in the back, covered in that black cloth. She's starting to be, to feel, to feel uncomfortable, like she wanted to calm down. There and then, the, the mother untied her and turned her to the front, and she saw the baby looks like she wants to, to do something. Released her, and the girl walked. I've not prayed, I've not prayed for them, I'm just sharing my stories. You know, I didn't know that this is the girl who was invalid for nine years. The girl had not even sat, even, everything was done to her like a little toddler. Nine year, who is supposed to be in school. And she moved around, and she screamed, and the women screamed. And it was a big, big thing. Let me tell you, let me tell you. That was the beginning of trouble. The whole village, after one hour, was in uproar that I have turned their wives into Christianity. So what next? He must die. He must! The man, the two men who received me worked all the tricks to hide me from house to house to house to house to house. And the whole village, because it's a border town bordering Ethiopia and Kenya, far away from home, the government officers were in arms because the border town was closed, that nobody could go in, nobody could go out. So I have no escape, they are trying to block the escape routes for the man, evil man, bad man, who is in the village and has turned people to Christianity. When I read about people wanting to kill Jesus because he has raised Lazarus, people wanting to kill Jesus because the man with a shriveled heart has been healed on a Sabbath, I saw it literally. They want to kill me because their daughter, not my daughter, their girl, they are invalid, their cripple has walked. What is evil about that if that's not the devil? Are you understanding my English? What is evil about one of their own becoming whole? Can you see the work of the devil? So for four days, I was moved under people's beds, people's beds, until the, the, the temperature cooled down. I was moved by motorcycles from this, this truck carrying, carrying cattle to the next truck, to the next truck, up to the fourth truck. And that is how I was hidden from that wrath, and I walked out. Coming close to my, to my town where I could alight, I called mama, my wife, please bring a vehicle to such and such a town. Because the way I am, nobody can receive me into his transport vehicle. Why? For those four days, I was going down, I was at the back of the truck with cows for slaughter. So they pooped on me, urinated on me. I, I was not like a, a living person for those four days. But the biggest joy, Christ has been known by a few people. Then, because it's a whole story, from that one visit and many other visits that I went, that has become a big, big place of the Church of Christ, such that now it's a full district of Kenya Seblis of God. Full district with many churches. And now every other church, the Catholic Church, Anglican Church, and every other church, everybody now has seen a ground that can be sown, you see? All because I prayed. If you fill me with the Holy Ghost, I'll go wherever you send me, and I will not fear. Do you want to be filled with the Holy Ghost? What reason do you have? To be speaking in tongues, to be making noise like other people? That was my first reason. I had a classmate who was very good at speaking in tongues. I wanted to, to outdo him. I wanted to speak like him. That was my only reason to be, that I decided to be filled with the Holy Ghost. But when I mentioned work, that is what, where the light was. So why do you want to be filled with the Holy Ghost? Do you have any assignment? Without an assignment, you can pray until the last cow dies and you won't receive. I can tell you that. You must have the burden to do something, something that heaven will understand. I was a man on assignment from day one. Go ye, and I'm still going, that's why I'm here.
Hallelujah. Come on, put your hands, give unto the Lord a mighty hand of praise.
One more thing, one more thing. As I continued to plant churches around that region, Makhew, it was a hundred percent Muslim. But the power of the Holy Ghost with signs, miracles, who can deny something that you can see with your own eyes? One day, they reached, they reached a point when a young man wanted to get married, and I'm the father of that region, so they invited me to conduct the wedding. I arrived on Thursday because I wanted to prepare the ground. They are not, they have, they have a background of that other religion. So what we do and how they conduct their weddings, I had to make sure they understand why I'm not doing what they know. So I was there, we wrote the certificate, I prepared them, how we shall sing, how shall conduct the procession, because I made the wedding to become an outreach ministry. We moved with lots of songs, and we are happy. I thought, a wedding is not, not like a funeral. This is the thing that you will do in heaven. This joy continues in heaven because you are the bride of Christ. So you must shine, show the world that you are appreciating. Let everybody know something special is happening. Let me tell you, we were happy, we rejoiced. Now this is about ninety or a hundred miles from where I planted the first church. Now here, when I conducted that procession and everybody was happy, everybody was in the highest spirit, now it's time to wed, to join these two in holy matrimony. But before I do that, I want to share the joy of wedding with you. I shared the joy of salvation. The whole village is there. They live in communities, and when they have something, you invite them, they will come, the whole village. So everybody was there. But little did I know, the chief was one of the people. I asked, how many amongst us here who want to have the joy that you have experienced here? Because this is the only people, Christians, are the only people with this kind of joy. The others rejoice because there's rice to it, there's chicken to it, there is this to drink. But here, we are rejoicing from the heart because we are the bride of Christ, we are waiting for another wedding. When I asked how many want to receive this joy, not Christ, the joy, eh? Joy, joy. Because Christ is not a good name for them there. But after they receive disciple them, how many want to receive the joy? The first person to come forward was the chief. Now, he asked for the mic to speak. He spoke through an interpreter, and he asked, you know how much trouble you have in this town, even from our neighboring country? It is because people don't have joy. Now, if I have received this joy, our problems will be over. You don't have to come with a chicken to my office for me to give you a certificate. It's my joy to give you a certificate for free, for whatever reason. Receive this joy together with me, so that our village may be at peace and joyful. The whole village came forward. As we thus speak, as we thus speak, the whole of that village, I have a church. Immediately, I built a church that would accommodate at least two thousand people. New pla, church plant. And the day it got finished, it was packed to capacity. The chief has gotten saved. The man who speaks has gotten saved. The man of authority has gotten saved. The man of power has gotten saved. Who will not get saved? So there is not a single person today in that village who has, who is in any other religion, they are all serving Jesus. Amen. That is the power of preaching with signs, miracles, and the power of the Holy Spirit. It has results that cannot be denied. Even if somebody stood there with a rifle, with a gun, the results are undeniable. The miracle is standing there, how can you say it's not there? That is the difference. Thank you. Amen.
Powerful, powerful, powerful. And now you told me also, some of the, now your early pastors, they're martyred, you know? As they find it works in this region. Some of your pastors were martyred. Some of you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, just tell that part quickly.
And on that, in that very first village where I was received, I had a very strong disciple who, with whom I planted the first church. His name is Happy, for the sake of people who are listening to me from Kenya. And they arose some skirmishes, and because he's a Christian and a man who is pushing darkness very backwards, the first person the holy guns aimed at during that day, afternoon time, was my pastor. He was murdered, and many others have died, not only that one. And the church now is with his, is with his wife, who is also doing a very good job, very good work of the ministry in that place. So be filled with the Holy Spirit. If one dies, God will raise another. The church has not died because my pastor died or my pastor was killed, the church is still moving on. Amen.
Shall you all stand to a feet and give unto the Lord big hand of praise? Come on. Hallelujah. We cannot just simply sit and listen. We give all the glory to God. Amen? And, yeah, before you could be seated, it's good to stand, no? So that you're, when you're seated, you are ready for more. And follow the principles. Okay, now, the man of God taught us, Holy Spirit is not a spiritual cosmetics. That's not for fashion people. You tell God what you'll do, what's gonna be your assignment. And then he's gonna fill you. By God's grace, we have been filled with the Holy Spirit, and you're not doing anything. It's time to really surrender your life to God. You're warming just the chairs of the church, coming and going back, playing a professional Christian. And, and I have told you so many times, ministry doesn't belong to us. No, it doesn't belong to us. We are the trainers who train people, who'll go out and do the ministry. The ministry belongs to the people of God. And every one of us bringing one more person to church, being saved and, you know, what baptized. Every year, the church can become twelve, even if you take twelve months. And sadly, maybe, now many of us, we don't even reach out to one soul in the entire year. Forget about bringing the villages to Christ, right? So, and the man of God said, God calls you, then he equips you. Okay? Then the key point you shared with us, when you go and share the gospel in, in, in a different kind of, in an ambience, environment, always remember, that's not the church. So you need to take out your suit, the church suit, right? The church mentality. Right? The church language. You know, once you move out, you need the wisdom of the Holy Spirit to share the gospel. Because if you share the gospel foolishly, it's gonna turn against you. The man of God said so beautifully, in a wedding, you made the chance as a platform, instead of saying Christ, he said joy. Amen? And one more thing, what we learn is, when God's gonna send you, always remember, he has gone ahead of you. Even before you could go, he has been visiting people in the dreams. Amen? So I pray that now some of you will accomplish mighty things for God outside the church, not just inside. Outside the church, that's where your mission field is. Amen? And kindly be seated. Man of God? Are you getting blessed? There are many other people are murdered. His wife was speaking to me, and I, she would tell him not to go. But he would say, if I come back, we'll serve the Lord together. Otherwise, you be strong and carry on the ministry. Can you think about a man of God being murdered, and his wife is carrying on with the mission? Amen? And he is sitting in the executive council of the assemblies of God for Kenya as a national mission director, and one of his converts is sitting with him in the top executive council from that Muslim region. In the top executive council from that Muslim region. Shall you put our hands, bless God?
Amen.
Amen? So now, having said that, now I want you to, now, just, now, keep in track of what I'm saying. What introduced me, is challenging me, is learning to work with the Holy Spirit. Learning to work with the Holy Spirit. He doesn't work for you. Right? He doesn't work for you. We work for him. And another thing what he has done, from Kenya, a black African, God has given a burden for him to reach out to the Native Americans. And many of you have gone to US, I know, you travel because of business, you go and come. But I'm talking about, you know, friends and those who frequently travel to the US. I do not know whether you're aware of it. There are about five million Native Americans in North America, Native Americans, you know? And they don't even speak English. And about forty percent or fifty percent, they don't have even electricity. And they don't even running water. They look a little bit different, can you put that in a thing that, yeah, you see them? They are the native tribes who are living in America before Columbus discovered America. Right? There are about four, five tribes of people and they all speak different languages, but Navajo, they call us a Navajo nation, they're Navajo people. You know, they are the topmost tribe in the Navajo nation. Can you put the rock place, you know, shiprock, that? So this is a place where God showed him and he went there. And now, it's like another America. Plenty of land, you know? And these people are living like, you know, poverty and they are into drug addiction, prostitution. And the real Americans, now, they have nothing to do with these people. In fact, I want to tell you, you know, Americans have taken the gospel all over the world. I grew up under American missionaries. And now, with many of them personally, I've interacted, we lived together with them. But I'm surprised, can there be a place in America where, now we are talking about five million, that's close to about fifty lakh people who are cut off. And they don't even speak English language. And this man of God, God gave him a vision to reach out to these Navajo people. And he has gone there year after year to America. And established thirteen churches. Now, I never knew. The moment he shared the other day, immediately went and started searching about the Navajo nation. And now, few documentaries I saw, my goodness, it blew my mind. Could there be such a place in America, the most developed nation? Yes, it is real. It has taken a Kenyan, a black African to go all the way to start a ministry, you know, thirteen churches there. So that story, and the ex, you know, president of this, now can you put that, Alan? I kept all the photo for you, you know? Alan, that he became his friend. And through his help, you could reach out to a lot of people. Now sir, I give you the background pictures. Tell us what led you there, it's crazy for a Kenyan to go into Arizona and all the desert places. And what made you, how did you connect, and now, take us into that, yeah?
You know, Abraham didn't know there was a mountain called Mount Moriah. He didn't know there was a lad, oh, sorry. He didn't know about a mountain called Mount Moriah. He didn't know about the Lord of Canaan. But God told him, come out of your people and start moving until I take you to a lad where I want you to occupy. Then he tells him, take your son. I think it was a discussion. Since by that time he had two sons. He say, he told God, I have two. Which one? God told him, the one you love. I love them both. Can you see that discussion?
Yes.
So, the one you love, he loved Ishmael and also Isaac. He told him, Isaac, Isaac! Isaac! Oh. Isaac, the one who has come as a son of promise? So, God will always speak a place to you. He will challenge you. For he knows what is ahead of you. So he spoke about this lad to me in the year 2006. I received missionaries who had come to work in Kenya. And as I was sharing my burden for the unreached, one of the red idiots was in the team. And he called me privately. He told me, stay around me. We talk about my people. If you don't have a burden for your people, you are making a big mistake. Because if you come from a family, that family should know Christ through you. If you come from a clan, that clan should be influenced by you. So he told me, I have a people. I come from the tribe of Navajo. They write it Navajo, but it's Navajo, the way they pronounce it. And he told me weird stories. I told, I'll be praying with you. And should God call me there, I will not waste another day, I will be there at the airport calling you. And so after about eight years, not eight years, six years, I went for a conference in America. And I called him, I told, I'm in America now. He told me, please, once the conference is over, come over. So I went. And the first thing he did was to drive me around the lad of, the nation of Navajo. He took me to a very dry place. He took me to villages that were totally in darkness. It's only hooliganism, drugs, thagari, people killing each other, there's no government, government there. A lot of drinking, and I was told, these people are fed on this alcohol, it is brought to them, so they may remain like, they can remain like this. It broke my heart. He took me to the forest. They are there. He took me to shrubs. They are there. And they are leading pathetic lives. I told the man of God, since I've come briefly, I'll come another time. And from that year onwards, I've been going. And every time I go, we open a new church. Every time I go, I open a new church. And mark you, this is America. These people have not been preached to and they refused. They have no witness. So, I preach through an interpreter in the lad of English speaking, but they can't speak, they can't understand English because they have never been to school. So, one day the president told me, we were cast. And I want to take you to the highest mountain where the tribe of Navajo was cast. Many witch doctors were taken there. And he gave me many stories. So we prepared the day. We went there, broke the curses. And he said, I am so happy that I have had the curses broken while I'm still alive. I don't have many days to live. And from this day on, the Navajo nation is open for you to do ministry. So, it's, it's only yesterday that I learned that he was taken by the COVID. That's when we were in his office, I learned that he was taken away by COVID. But work is great in the Navajo nation. He told me that it's not, it's not only the Navajo nation. I will introduce you to the other nations around, the Apache, Cherokee and such like. People who are in America, but they don't do, they don't enjoy anything in their land. That's how the Holy Spirit leads.
It's a long story, you know, you cannot share everything, but shall you put our hands and give unto the Lord a mighty hand of praise? Now, I want you to understand something like, you know, even if you don't go like him, you know, to a different place, we can, some of you will. But it all starts with reaching out to your neighbor.
Yes.
Praying for people on the street. You know, sometime you can be very busy, you know, in the church, doing a lot of things and you think that defines your ministry, no, you are helping, assisting in the services. Right? You could be part of ushering team, or worship team, or music team, and a lot of other things. But don't think, if you're not winning any souls, you are just fooling ourselves. You're just fooling yourself. Mission is the heart of God. Amen? And not only that, now, it's gonna be around six, but he also established a beautiful church in Japan. Amen? And he has traveled to all the African countries, UK, I don't know, what other nations, other nations he has gone. But tell me, it was very interesting, the kind of demonic encounter you had. You know, when you, from another enemy wanted to stop you at China. Things went and all the hell broke loose until you could make to Japan. And then how the, now, you could establish a church there, all the story, just go with that.
Let me first of all finish with the Navajo nation.
Okay, okay, we are ready.
At one time, I felt a very deep desire to go to a particular place of the people that I had seen in the Navajo nation. But I tried to raise money for my ticket to go. Time was running out. And I was not getting money from my congregation because we were in the middle of a program, building program. So what do I do? And God has called me to go to those people and I feel the urgency. I sold my car to raise the ticket. So, yeah, I sold my car, raised, raised the ticket and went. When I went, I was taken to a village where an old woman was holding on for a dream she had. An old Navajo preacher, very old. And she said, I will not die until I get a man who will put these, my children into ministry. Not, not her biological children, the people she had raised as ministers. Single-handedly, they, she had the word, brought it to her village, but nobody wants to take over and her ears were hurting. So I went there for a whole week, stayed with those people day and night, teaching them, ministry, teaching them the Bible, teaching them what to do. And I told him, your mother is old. And her assignment may be over soon. We should have one of you rise up to the occasion. Should he not rise up from her bed tomorrow? What do you think this work will be, what will happen to this work? And sure enough, when I prayed for two men to take over the work of the ministry, because this woman old, could lead, sing the songs, talk about the offering, preach and do everything. And I was told many times, she preached seated, she could not start, she was very old. So, two weeks after I went back to Africa, she was gone to the Lord. And the church moves on. So, when you have the drive of the Holy Spirit, things don't just happen. You'll be told when to move and move with speed. And don't say, I have no means. If you have something to give, give it out, get the ticket, go for the, for the job. So the thing is, all of us can do something for God. So concerning my ministry to Japan, that is one ministry that I was hindered by the devil more than any other ministry. The man that introduced me to Japan was my disciple from a university where I worked for many years. And when he went there, he told me, Bishop, there is no church in Japan, can you come, establish and pray with me? Let's come and start something, come and start something. I told him, well, let's have a date. On the date that I was going, reaching Shanghai, the way is through Shanghai, then into Japan. When we were changing planes, somebody comes into the line with a black powder. Asking, this, yours? I said, no. I was pulled aside. And they interrogated me. I was interrogated until my next plane left me. At that time, everybody else in the office pretended that they cannot speak English. You can imagine? And the whole night, I moved from office to office to office to office, trying to connect to Japan. And there was no way out. I called my office, my agent in Nairobi. Again, it became a big, big problem. The girl in the office could not handle my situation. So what do I do? I called the man in Japan, I'm in between here and there, I'm in Shanghai and very bad things are happening, but I have prayed through all of the night, I'm coming, but I don't know how. He told me, wait. That's the first time I was passed, almost smuggled into another country. Because the minister, the immigration of Japan spoke the immigration of South Korea. And they said, there is a very important man who is in between our countries and is coming to us, Japan has opened his way. Can he come through your country on a diplomatic immunity, though his passport doesn't have that? And give him leeway. I was told the plane to, to go into by the government in Shanghai. I saw officers come to me like, like they were arresting me, but they were very peaceful. Took me to a plane, I was given a VIP treatment. Went into, and getting to South Korea, I was, I did not check in like any other passenger. I went through the VIP door and everything was just a VIP treatment. And in, I went into Japan. When I landed, these are the ones I was told. When this country receives men like you, it trembles because the demons don't want to face you. So if you feel the tremor at night, don't fear, only make sure that nothing is above where you are. But the building cannot collapse, it is well taken care of scientifically. That was, that was not the issue. In the night, with all my doors locked, I heard somebody breathing inside my room. Like this. And without a doubt, I knew from the breathing, this person is in the room. I asked myself, how? Do I open my eyes to see? Do I, what do I do? I began to call the name of Jesus. Opening my eyes, my bed was about seven feet next to the ceiling. I asked myself, am I dreaming? Or I am awake? The bed has been lifted almost the ceiling. I cannot climb down. I called upon the name of Jesus, repented the Spirit and started my spiritual warfare. You don't have to be studying when you are doing spiritual warfare. We win and conquer even when we are kneeling down. Even when you are sleeping, we can still fight. So I fought from that position until my bed was lowered down. And I heard from outside the corridor, the man was breathing inside the room, clear his throat as he was going out. I, I heard. He left and I knew it's over. And I knew this island. I knew I have power and authority, I am taking this island. It was in Fukuoka, the southern, the southern big island, where missionaries trying to reach Japan. And every vessel that came to try and bring the gospel in, they never landed, they were killed at sea. And have come to disturb those spirits. So for the week, one week that I stayed around, we established a strong church that is even now. Amen. I'm going back the next year, 2025, to baptize a few people. Amen. By the grace of God.
Wow, 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 wow. Shall you put our hands, give unto the Lord a mighty hand of praise? Okay, by the way, are you all enjoying? And can you know that we are all playing church too much? We are all playing church too much. Right? And we don't see anything beyond that. I pray that some of you will step out. I'm not saying that you should, you know, go on another continent, but start from where you are, Jerusalem.
Yes.
You know, from where you are. But also the man of God said, you know, so beautifully talking about, you know, anointing is given for an assignment.
Yes, yes, yes.
You know, many times, you know, I told him, the man of God, I operate from being addressed, right? Operate from being addressed and I learned that. You know, whenever I go out, I minister, it's not that I'm there taking down nodes, what to speak, no. And I flow out of my belly. But when I stand there on assignment, you know, sometime you might have seen. You know, I would be very tired, go back home, slept because of tiredness. I could add time only to get up and come back here, the power of God would be awesome. The man of God made it very clear, saying that anointing is for assignment.
Yes.
You need to go.
Yes.
Go in the strength you have. And one of the things, prayer enhances anointing, yes, that's true. But there's something else more than prayer, because all of us, we pray.
Yes.
There's something else more than prayer, I would like to say obedience enhances your anointing supernaturally. Just because you obey, just because you go, that's what Abraham did. Now, that's what the man of God did. He is like a modern day apostle, right? Amen? The stories we listen.
Yeah.
The moment, now, the first time I met him, it was in a stadium and he could not be very busy with the crusade that was going on. But he came over there and the moment I shook hands with him, meanwhile, why we, and I felt the spirit of God told me he is an apostle. So that's the introduction I received, you know. But the man of God says powerfully, you know, when God gives you an assignment, it demands a sacrifice.
Yes.
It demands a sacrifice.
Yes.
Always remember, what you're willing to sacrifice will determine the rewards in your ministry. It's not your comfort zone, you need to come out of your comfort zone, be willing to pay the price. And then you see how God's going to use you so powerfully. Amen?
Amen.
So that's a story of Japan.
Yes.
And he has a lot of other stories. You name any country. I know he drives, as you say, he has a brado in a Land Cruiser and the whole day had driven, you know, keeping me and my wife. I was wondering some tears of each, where he gets the kind of strength. He drives all the way to Gigali, Rwanda and Ethiopia and many other countries. And also he has a truck, you know, a truck with a gospel truck, his team goes. So tell me, sir, the place, the Jerusalem, the village where you came from, and recently you went. And what happened there? Because that's a demonic seed.
Yes.
And now you decided that's your time to pay back to the community.
Yes.
Just tell us.
You see, I have just shared with Pastor Samuel about the burden of reaching your people. I come from a family, a large family. Where my mother came from was a village, was from a royal kind of setup. She was born in a, in a family where the, her grandfather had sixty-four wives. Are those many? Sixty-four wives. You've not had anything like that here in India. And so we occupy about eight villages. And all those eight villages, they are all my cousins, my aunties, my uncles. Eight villages, complete. And when I got saved, I inquired a lot about them. And I got somebody who knew almost everything about that family, a relative. So I thought, man, now that I've gotten saved, that darkness of witchcraft and alcoholism and polygamy should end. He asked me, how, where do you start? I told him, I must start somewhere. I called a big meeting of all the leaders of those eight villages. Pastor Samuel has just said, you got to pay a sacrifice. You, it must cost you. To put all those people together, you have to talk about food. Or what do you think? Talk about eating, people will come. So I slaughtered several goats, several bulls. I bought, not from my garden, I bought them. I'm preparing a big party and cooked a lot of tea and snacks and sent invitations. About how many people turned up? Seven hundred, one family. You see, I had to get for a permit to hold such a meeting because that's a big crusade. Nobody knew the agenda except me and that man who had told me about the story, the background of those people. Because all of them were embalmed in sin, they were not progressing. And they had not seen the goodness of education. I was the only one who was out, alone, out with a college education. And all these others were finishing school at class eight, from four, no, no career. So when I called them, my four children were the music leaders and my wife. And who is the speaker? Me, the one with the agenda. And I talked about darkness, I talked about light, I told them about my children and the reason why we are what we are and why I have called this meeting and why we are able to feed them. You should be able to feed your family because Christ will enable you when you see the light. I told them, every family should aspire to go to college with a college degree. And I made an altar call. I gave them my family as an example. You should be an example to your, to the people around you. I told them, my daughter is in the university, my son is in the university, those other two are also following. And I told them, and we are not poor, Jesus has made us rich. Oh, I talked great about the kingdom and everybody felt like it's beautiful to be in the kingdom. I made an altar call. From among the seven hundred people, about thirty give their lives to Jesus. Today, that large family, a lot of change has taken place. From there, I went to the village where I was born. When I was growing up, there was a man who did not want to see people progressing. And he poisoned, I don't know whether it's poisoning here in India. Poisoning. Children who were bright, he gave them oranges and passion fruit. What he had put inside, nobody knows because no child ate that fruit who saw the following day. They all died. And he was targeting the bright kids. I was a next student from elementary to college. And so he tried many times to give me a fruit and I avoided because my mother had warned me against taking anything from that man. Women, talk good to your children, talk about their future and warn them about the evil parts. I took the word of my mother very seriously and that is how I survived. Many years later, God spoke to my heart to plant a church in my home village. And my first crusade, demons showed up and they began to speak. I, I, I will kill you. How can you come to my bed? How can you come to where I have established? I tried to kill you many years ago and you are still alive. This time you will not out. These are demons speaking through a girl, a tiny girl. She could not be subdued by all my ashes and I have strong ashes. They look like bouncers, you know bouncer? So then I had, I had a visiting preacher. When he saw the girl fly in the air, he ducked and went and hid himself behind a tent, behind the tent. Yes. He wanted to get hold of the preacher, but he was just telling the testimony I was a preacher. So when I got hold of her, her eyes were beaming like these lights, light. And she was very angry at me. I told them, you guys, you release her, get out of her, come out. I've sent him this, a trailer. Yeah, you can, you can see it.
Play the one I sent you.
The demons were resting, they had a habitation, they had a home in this girl.
It was Kajio, Kajio.
We are victorious, we are victorious, nothing can conquer us, we are victorious.
We are victorious, we are victorious, nothing can conquer us, we are victorious.
If you're victorious, put your hands together. One, two, one, two, three.
And I'm never gonna stop.
Never gonna stop.
No.
Never gonna yield.
And we are more than conquerors.
More than conquerors.
Every time.
Every time.
Every time.
Yeah.
Time comes, listen, come on.
We are victorious, we are victorious.
And I'm never gonna.
We are victorious.